So this is the eighth regular meeting in the Lynn School Committee, which is happening Monday, May 3rd, 2021. We want to welcome everyone to the meeting and as a preliminary matter, we'll confirm attendance, both with the members and those that are anticipated on the agenda to identify they're present and they can hear us. Deb, so if you'd.
Cool.
Get us started.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Gately?
Present.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Sadoway?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present.
And for the record, also present, Dr. Tutwiler, Superintendent; Ms. Powers, Deputy Superintendent; Ms. Regiro, Deputy Superintendent; Mr. McHugh, School Business Administrator; Ms. Jewels, Secretary of the School Committee, and Attorney Myhouse.
Great, thank you. Again, I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the city website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference, video conference via the Zoom platform, as posted on the city's website and on the Lynn Public Schools website. Additionally, this meeting can be viewed on the local cable channels, Channel 3 for Comcast and Channel 37 for Verizon. Note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer, anything you broadcast may be captured by that recording or this recording. Before we get started on the first agenda item tonight, just want to cover some ground rules so we can have an effective and clear conduct of our business tonight and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they have concluded their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each to by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions, and ask that you hold until your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking, and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, wait for the chair to yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking, if I have not already identified you. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. So with that, again, I would like to welcome everyone. So this is actually the fourth special meeting of the school committee, which is incorporating the meeting from last Thursday night, so we're actually merging two meetings together. The agenda has been submitted and is available, as I stated earlier. With that, I'd like to ask, and I know that the meeting room with the American flag is available, so I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join me in a salute to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, on the agenda is minutes from several meetings. Actually, there's a long list of meetings that are minutes that we would, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I make a motion to accept minutes. Would you like them read, Mayor?
If you would do that, that would be great, Member Capola, just so it's clear to those as we're keeping a record.
Okay.
I know there's a long list, but if you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be great.
No, not at all. Okay. Motion is made to accept the following minutes: Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee Meeting on February 11th, 2021; Third Regular Meeting on February 11th, 2021; Special Second Meeting on February 23rd, 2021; Committee of the Whole Meeting on February 25th, 2021; Athletics Subcommittee on February 25th, 2021; Fourth Regular Meeting on February 25th with Executive Session; Policy Subcommittee Meeting on March 3rd, 2021; Building and Grounds Subcommittee on March 11th, 2021; Personnel Subcommittee Meeting on March 11th, 2021; Fifth Regular Meeting on March 11th, 2021; Personnel Subcommittee Meeting on March 25th, 2021; Sixth Regular Meeting on March 25th, 2021; Third Special Meeting on April 1st, 2021 with Executive Session; Policy Subcommittee Meeting on April 7th, 2021; Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee on April 8th, 2021; Seventh Regular Meeting on April 8th, 2021; and Committee of the Whole Meeting on April 10th, 2021.
Thank you, Member Capola. There's a motion been made to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Seconded.
We have a number of seconds. Requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is on the new business, a request to accept a donation of social and racial justice books from Lynn Teachers Union, Racial and Social Justice Committee. Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that?
Would love to.
Thank you.
Seeking the, good evening, seeking the committee's approval to accept a donation of books around the theme of social and racial justice from the Lynn Teachers Union, Racial and Social Justice Committee. They've raised $6,000 for these books, and I had the wonderful honor of joining Sheila O'Neal at Harrington Elementary last week to read one to a second grade class, wonderful sets of books, and would love for the school committee to support it.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, and I think thank you to Sheila O'Neal and Lynn Teachers Union. Glad to see the books are out there and being used. Need to entertain a motion to accept the donation?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Member Capola, and seconded. That would require a roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Again, thank you to the Lynn Teachers Union and Sheila O'Neal for spearheading that with the superintendent and raising those dollars and making those books available to the students, and that's great. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I think this lines up a little bit with the same subject matter, Dr. Tutwiler, but it's a field trip request for Skills USA students, two of them, as my understanding, to actually go to Good Morning America in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania on May 3rd and 4th of 2021. Would you like to fill us in on both the request as well as what's been involved in what they're doing over at Skills USA to get that invitation?
Gladly, Mayor. Seeking the committee's support for an out-of-state and overnight field trip for two students to go to Pittsburgh. As the mayor said, they will appear on the Good Morning America show, two seniors from Lynn Tech. Actually, the Good Morning America film crew was on-site at Lynn Tech last Thursday to interview the students, and then they'll be on live tomorrow morning between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., not quite sure where in that period of time. But these students are part of, were part of, or led the effort with Skills USA to develop a professional development, I think is the best way to describe it, called building tolerance and inclusivity. It's a 90-minute virtual workshop that they've had, the honor of presenting 18 times across the city and beyond in the state of mass. This caught the attention of the Skills USA folks and later the good people at Good Morning America, and they were just so taken with the depth of the program and the skills of the students involved that they wanted to go a little bit further and have them there personally. So we are both excited for them and really, really proud that yet again, our students are deserving the recognition that they deserve.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. Again, we all know the Skills USA program is just an amazing program down at Lynn Tech, and they've won national, you know, the national awards, and just the work they do is, like you said, we're all proud of that great work. So this is an easy, from my perspective, request, and with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve this field trip request.
Motion to approve.
And second?
Second.
Second.
Second, great. Roll call required.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. And I'm sure they'll, those that get a chance to see them on Good Morning America are going to be as proud and impressed as we are. Very exciting news, and great, great work they did to put all of that together and continue to work on it. So congratulations to them and the hard work that goes on over there at Lynn Tech and the Skills USA program. Next on the agenda is a vote to continue nonparticipation in school choice for school year 2021, 2022. Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that, or would anyone else want?
Glad to. Just seeking the committee's support, again, by vote for nonparticipation in the school choice program. It's no secret that we are at capacity in our schools with our enrollment of resident students, so would love the school committee's support to not participate in school choice.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. Is there a motion?
Would you make a motion to continue nonparticipation?
Second.
A motion made by Member Ford, seconded by Member Capola. Roll call required.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is a vote for the last day of school for 2020, 2021 school year, June 17th, as a half a day. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, again, just seeking the school committee's formal support for identification of the last day of school. We had one cancellation this winter, making the last day of school move from June 16th to the 17th, which will be a half day.
Entertain a motion, Member Nicholson?
Can I just ask a question?
Please.
I think as we're thinking about the calendar in the summer, is there any sort of preview that you might be able to offer about learning opportunities that are going to be taking place, that are made available this summer?
Yeah, so in my superintendent's report, I actually say a little bit about that. I'm planning to make a formal presentation to this, in this space, on May 13th. That will include dates and times. There was one piece that we were sort of waiting on that we'll discuss in executive session, but we, there will be a formal presentation at our next meeting, next week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion to, I'd love to entertain a motion to make June 17th, 2021, the last day of the school year, and that would be a half day.
Motion.
Motion to accept. June 17th is the last day of the school year.
Motion made, motion made and seconded, requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, I think Dr. Tutwiler as well, you'll be presenting this, a graduation discussion? Would you like to, or, go ahead?
Sure, Mayor, I'm happy to speak to it, but there was a member who asked that this be put, be put on the agenda, but I'm happy to offer an update.
Okay.
You want to start with that?
Yes, we'll start, we want to start with an update, or with, Member Gately?
Yeah, I asked to put this on the agenda because I got several phone calls from concerned parents about all these rumors and things that were going on, so just have to know, you know, what's happening with graduation, my input, the rest of the committee's input, and the superintendent. I bet we're on the same page here with Dr. Tutwiler. That's all, that's why I put it on, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions, or would you want to let Dr. Tutwiler get into the discussion on it, and if any other members have a thought on it, or we can start with you, Dr. Tutwiler, and go from there with questions? Thank you.
Sure, glad to. You know, first, I can't say enough how proud I am of our seniors, of all of our students, but of our seniors for their accomplishment, their hard work, and I'll borrow from Member Castellanos' scholarship campaign, their resilience. They are very close to completing their requirements and earning their diploma, and there's a deep feeling of pride and excitement for them for their steps ahead. And we very much look forward to celebrating their accomplishments and their resilience in what we would call a traditional ceremony, and I think that's what that member Gately was referring to. We plan to hold graduation ceremonies on June 1st for Lynn Tech and Fecto Leary, and June 2nd for English and Classical. Happy to go through the times and what matters if you like, but on those dates, all graduates will be invited to sit on the field, spaced appropriately at three feet apart. Each graduate will be able to invite two guests, two people that they would like to attend the graduation with them. They'll be seated, the parties will be seated six feet apart in the stands on both sides, following the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We will have protocols around entry, around exit, around ticketing. We also will follow the guidance as it relates to the ceremony itself. One feature of that is that they ask the ceremonies be kept brief. That means that as much of a struggle it will be for me, my speech will be one minute long, but we are going to honor the students and allow the students' speeches to be three to five minutes, as they typically are. Want to make sure that we elevate their voices and, you know, give them the deserved opportunity to address their classmates. We continue to refine the details, but right now, we, every aspect of guidelines around safety, around health, are built into our plan, and we're really excited about it. So that's where we stand right now, again, June 1st, Lynn Tech and Fecto, June 2nd, Classical and English, with rain dates on the 3rd and 4th.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
Member Sadoway, was that your question?
My question was the rain dates, yes.
Right, thank you. Other, Member Capola?
Is it same location as last year, and if you could let people know that?
Yep. Manning Field, same location as last year, and we've got a little bit of muscle memory around working in that space, and excited to get back.
And just a point of information, that Stadium Commission, two or three weeks ago, voted to approve the field at use, so that's, you know, that's all set. If there was any questions on that, I know there were some questions around that, but that was, that was approved to use the fields for the graduations, and look forward to it. Member Gately?
I was just wondering if the stages were going to be in the end zone?
Yeah.
Go ahead, girl.
It needs to be so that we can use both sides of the stands. Lynn English has the most seniors at 450, so if they bring two guest seats, you're talking 900 guests, and so we're going to need both sides. So yes, it'll be in the end zone with the chairs lengthwise.
And will, like in past graduations, will we be handing out the diplomas?
We haven't gotten to that detail yet, but I will say preliminarily, we're trying to avoid touch points, so right now, they're talking about the jackets to the diplomas being on the chairs where the students will sit. They will walk up with their jacket and cross the stage, but we're trying not to do touch points.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? From the members? Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. I know as that, as the contingents evolve, you'll, as they become more logistics and all of that, we'll get more information over the next few weeks, I'm sure. Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, the updated operating protocols. I know we had a number of discussions with that. Member Sadoway?
I uploaded the operating protocols that were updated at our retreat, was it last month or the month before?
April 12th.
Last month.
Yeah, last month.
Time goes by quickly and sometimes slowly, it's tough to keep track.
It's May 3rd, it's crazy. So I sent over the changes to Secretary Jewels, and I didn't get any feedback about making any additional changes, so that document that was sent by Ms. Kinlan to all of us is uploaded on Dot Loop for signature if there's no changes to be made.
I think everyone has had a chance. Would anyone like to speak to those? I think we had a very good discussion related to that, so if there are questions, please raise them. If not, we can move forward on accepting the updated operating protocols. I'm happy to have a discussion, or like I said, we had a pretty robust and full discussion two or three weeks ago related to our changes, and I think we did a good job putting this together. Member Sadoway?
And just to clarify for those watching, I know that it was a little difficult to hear the meeting with the, with the new tool we had, which was not really new, but we went over the operating protocols that we established in 2018, I believe, and what it is, it dictates and is an agreement between the school committee and the superintendent on how our relationships should operate. Since COVID and several years of the document being a live document, we were able to make some minor tweaks to the document to make sure that we're reestablishing what our hopes are for the operating relationship between the school committee and the superintendent, and I think that it does, it does the document justice and brings some clarification for those that are reading the document, to be able to have a better understanding of what they should expect from the administration and from the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sadoway. Other comments or questions? I think you laid it out pretty well. Like I said, we had a very robust and I think really good discussion on these protocols and made some changes, and I think stayed with a lot of what we had worked out on in 2018, so at this point, look for a motion to accept, and I don't know if we actually have to physically sign the document, or we can accept it through roll call, and I'll have to join my host on the appropriate action to take to accept the protocols.
We have Dot Loop to sign it, too.
Okay.
That's what I have it through, yeah.
Okay, so we're prepared for that. Okay.
So just check your emails, let me know if you need me to resend it to you.
Okay.
And I'll make that motion to accept the updated protocols.
I think we'll do, that'll be great. We'll do a motion with a second, roll call, and then we'll sign the document once we've approved it. So is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion and second to accept the protocols? Roll call required.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes.
And we will sign it and send it off.
Excuse me, Michael, did you send it?
I did. I see that Jared looked at it already.
I didn't get it. To our school committee email?
Whatever email I've had since last year for you. Let me see what that is, one second.
I'll check.
So I have Jared's signature, I have Mayor McGee's signature.
I just got it.
Okay.
Mine.
John, I have your, make sure you hit finish signing, or it won't get sent back to me. There's a box on top, but I don't have yours yet.
Michael, I will be a late signer. I'm locked in place there, can't move.
I understand. And once it's signed, I'll send it to Mary and to Dr. Tutwiler.
Do another minute, but I think the late signing will be fine. We've already approved it through a roll call, and the signatures are on the way.
You can't move, Michael?
I got yours, yep. I'm just waiting on John and Donna and Patrick. And Dr. Tutwiler, just like before, can you make sure that it's uploaded in Word directly onto the website? Okay, thank you. John, I got it.
Okay.
We're all set.
Success.
Okay, well, next, as we're doing this, we can get started on the next agenda item. That's agreeable to the members?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's goals.
That would be me, Mayor.
Yes, I see that you've, you're sharing the.
Yeah.
PowerPoint on the screen, so we can see that. I think everyone can see it, hopefully.
Just so quickly, there were two agenda items at that Saturday retreat on April 10th. One was the operating protocols, and the other was a robust discussion on the goals, and I just want to walk folks through them really quickly. In keeping with the characteristic of this year as full of uncommon experiences and change, we're finalizing the goals for the year at a time much later than we normally do. While we're finalizing formally in this space tonight, many of the goals reflect targeted foci the district established in August of 2020. You'll notice the updated descriptor underneath the title. By way of information, as I just said, we met on Saturday, April 10th, to discuss these goals in detail. You were provided updated goals reflecting your input and feedback on April 16th, and the task this evening is to formally accept them. Since the beginning of my tenure as superintendent, the student learning goal has always focused on increasing achievement for all learners. The indicators for that have focused on elevating success for students with disabilities and English learners. Given the uniqueness of this year and the lack of viable data from the previous year, we focus our student learning goal on establishing the conditions for learning. A big piece of that effort this year involves ensuring that students were able to access instruction. The goal of maintaining an average daily attendance rate of at least 90% was established at the beginning of the year. On your suggestion, we added an additional indicator around chronic absenteeism. That makes total sense. That makes total sense, given that this isn't an accountability criterion. However, given that there was interrupted data from last year and thus no targets established by DESI for this year, developing this indicator was tricky. We landed in a place of identifying an indicator that allowed us to measure our work this year compared to last year, acknowledging the context and the challenges of the context, and establishing a percentage of difference that was both realistic and ambitious. Shifting to district improvement goals, the first is heavily focused on establishing a strong foundation for learning and communication in this unique context. Each of the indicators reflects completion of a critical task, development of a system, or identification of a framework, all aimed at servicing student needs this year. You will notice that this goal and each of the subsequent goals, you will notice in them that there is a connection to a strategic objective. I just want to underscore that our strategic plan very much drives our goals each year. The work that went into that plan was significant, and we're all believers in the contents and the objectives of that plan. Therefore, annually, district improvement goals are designed to move us closer to achieving the strategic objectives. We remain complete, committed to increasingly diversifying the racial and linguistic diversity of our staff. For decades, the research has overwhelmingly posited a racially diverse staff as having a number of benefits for all students and students of color in particular. In keeping with the goal language of last year, we intend to leverage a host of strategies designed to increase the racial diversity of our staff by at least one percent each year. I want to note one small change that I made in the goal language that I think has a big meaning. I added the words "at least" in the very last sentence. This was a serious endeavor and our intentions are sincere. I don't want to give the impression that we are satisfied with a one percent increase. I think all of us is aware that this is a nationwide challenge, and many districts are making a concerted effort to recruit and retain staff of color. The goal is realistic and rigorous, given the context, but we would like to exceed it each year. This school year has been like no other and we are still learning about and understanding all of the impact of all the difference and challenges students and families have experienced since last March. I don't think we'll fully know the impact of all of this for some time. Nonetheless, we intend to shape efforts and experiences that we believe will accelerate student learning. That includes a robust summer learning opportunity referred to earlier, as well as a framework for learning next year. I intend to share in detail our plans for summer at our next meeting. I also plan to provide you and our families with a framework for, for, for learning next year in the coming weeks. Here, I just want to quickly add emphasis to the term accelerate. It is not our intention to remediate, but rather to help students access and master grade level standards next year. Finally, in keeping with our strategic plan, we've learned a lot about partnerships with families this year and have even made some critical adjustments to improve that partnership. The purpose of this goal is to build on that. As you can see in the indicators, this includes defining existing positions to ensure that we are strategically moving toward the outcomes we would like in partnership and, in partnership and relationships with families. It also includes a development of an annual survey to gather feedback from families on how they are experiencing our efforts and where we can improve. We know that partnering with families is a research-supported endeavor that gives rise to stronger student outcomes. Beyond that, we feel that the partnership helps us better understand student needs to allow us to tailor our efforts accordingly. And with that, just to clarify, the goals were tweaked according to the feedback. One important piece that was not present in all of the goals, at least explicitly so, was the piece that makes them smart, particularly specifically the, the ability for us to measure whether or not the goal was made. In the updated goals, there are specific empirical measures or indicators for each so that when it comes to our time to sort of reflect on the goals, usually we do this, you know, mid-fall, late fall, there'll be specific measures that we can point to to determine whether or not the goal was met. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Dr. Tuttwiler, would you mind? Yeah, thank you. Member Sadoway has a question?
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. So you just talked about when we're going to discuss the, the outcomes of, of the document that you just submitted to us. But what I, what I want to help clarify for the people watching is typically we, we come up with these measurements much earlier than the month before the end of school. So what you see, it might be familiar with certain announcements that have been made throughout the school year with the hiring of the Welcome Center Director and certain programs that we've, we've pushed out. So, so obviously those were a part of the overall district strategic plan, but they're also a part of what we, what we hope to get done this particular year. And if, if people are interested in seeing what the district strategic plan is and the timeline and timeframe, they're able to get, review that online. So I, I like that you added some measurements, which I thought was very important. Again, many people couldn't hear what was discussed at the retreat, but we had an in-depth conversation where we wanted at least some connection to student learning because of COVID. And that was brought up by Member Capola. And then Member Nicholson also brought up the, the measurement part of it. So I like that you added the attendance, you have two measurements for that. And then you also have additional measurements for, for the other things, which is great. What I do, what I did mention at the retreat was if we could have a more concrete statement regarding the parent liaisons and how they're going to fall into the Welcome Center because they're going to play a very important role in that. But there was nothing that was explained a little bit more so to, to have a measurement on that. And but I think it's broad enough that you can, you can, you can make it work. But I, I just want to make sure that that's the direction I hoped we were going with that.
Yeah, so if I may, just quickly, Mayor. The, the, the job description for parent liaisons needs to be negotiated with the, the L T U. What I put in the goals as an indicator is that we would visit the job description and responsibilities of that role. So there's certainly still the, you know, it is possible to move in that direction, but it'll have to be in partnership with the, with the teacher chamber.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Member Nicholson?
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, we talked about these goals at length in the retreat. I think they're, I think they're cover really important ground and I appreciate the work that you've done to sort of refine the measurement of it. So I, you know, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Looks good.
Other questions?
Do we need to file a motion for?
I think a motion to accept the, obviously, as we've indicated, this is later in the year. Everything is, been a, been a different way of doing business, obviously, in the last year for everyone and not just in the school. So I think we file a motion to accept the proposal.
Motion to accept the superintendent's goals as presented?
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Tuttwiler, is the school year twenty-one, twenty-two calendar.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to present a calendar for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to the school committee for their input and for ultimately their approval. But I just want to say at the outset, that, that approval would be pending a, you know, agreement with the Lynn Teachers Union as, as there are aspects of that calendar that would require their agreement. One second here and I'll share the screen. Is everyone able to see that? Okay. So, so just quickly, I mean, there's, there's lots of colors and, and things, you know, slashes and things of that nature. I will walk you through that. This looks a lot like our, our previous calendars, but I want to make sure that people understand what they're looking at. And I'm going to start with the student experience first. This calendar follows, for students, a pretty traditional year with a start date of September seventh, all of the traditional holidays and things of that nature, and a last day of school of June seventeenth. I think that falls in line with, you know, what the district has traditionally done in terms of the student experience. I will also add, related to the student experience, in yellow, the boxes with the slash through them, those represent early release days where staff would engage in professional development. So students would be released early, staff would stay their contractual time and engage in professional collaboration, professional learning. By contract, this is a contractual feature. The language in the contract reads that it, that there can be only one per month. You'll notice that the month of March is, it's a pretty long month in terms of the number of weeks. We've added a second early release day in that month, and we have no early release day in February. So we'll need to seek the union's approval for that. So that's the student experience. In terms of staff, there's a couple of things that are different on here. The first I would point out is if you look at the month of September, it's got the last four days of August on that, in that box. And the thirty-first of August, first and second shaded gray. The days that are shaded gray are full day professional development days for staff. We would like to invite staff to begin their school year before the Labor Day weekend for those three days. And that would be the perfect opportunity as some members have expressed interest in professional development, learning the new technology, getting settled and oriented for the year in advance of students coming. We think those three days would be critical. In the current teachers' contract, it does state that staff will begin after Labor Day. So we need to seek an agreement with them for that. The election day, November second, that day would remain. So staff are gaining, on the whole, two additional full professional development days, which we think is really important. That in addition to the early release days, which are baked in to the calendar. I think that, I think that is, that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
If you could take the screen down, Dr. Tuttwiler, so I can see the, the members who might have questions? The questions from the committee? Member Nicholson?
Can I just ask a question about process? Since this is a, this is going to be sort of collectively bargained with the union, is this something that you've already gotten feedback on and you are at the final stages of a discussion? Or, because that usually is when we get, we'd be getting the approval. So could you just say a little more about where we are in that process?
Yeah, I'm happy to, but I want to make sure I don't make a mistake here. John, what, what can I say here? I think you muted your, you're muted.
And we have executive session, too, coming up.
Okay, so no John Myhos, but yes, you are, you are receiving this. Go ahead, John.
I think there should be, discussion should be go further in executive session. I don't think there needs to be dealt in anymore at this level. I think the questions will be answered in the discussion of the negotiations in executive session.
Thank you, Attorney Myhos. So we'll hold off those discussions till executive session. Any, any other questions related to the timing or the dates or anything else with the calendar as presented? So with that, are we accepting? So again, Attorney Myhos, are we able to accept it subject to the approval of some issues that will be related in the executive session?
Well, subject to the efficient negotiations with the teacher union.
So we can accept it with that caveat?
Correct.
Okay. Was there a motion, Member Nicholson?
Yeah, I, I, I feel, it feels a little out of order for me to, 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 at least the way I'm feeling right now, I'd be curious how my colleagues feel to take a vote on this. We want to hear about?
Member Sadoway, and I, I may, go ahead, Member Sadoway. Thank you, Member.
I could, I, I can make a motion to move this until after the executive session so my, my brother Nicholson can feel comfortable in, in his vote.
I was, I was going to suggest the same thing. So I think taking it up after the executive session would be appropriate. Would you like to make that motion, Member Sadoway?
Motion to move letter H on the agenda, school year twenty-one, twenty-two calendar, to after the executive session, which is J.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
So we'll take that up afterwards. Thank you for the discussion. Next on the agenda is ratification of votes taken in the policy subcommittee meeting on April seventh.
Thank you.
Member Nicholson?
Yep, thank you, Mayor McGee. So we had two motions that were approved and sent to the full committee. This was part of the ongoing policy manual, policy manual overhaul that we are working on with the policies of committee, committee of the whole, with Attorney Gallo and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. The, the, generally, we're, we're going through the entire manual and we'll, and we'll take that up at the end. But we're moving along a couple policies that need to be improved in order to put together the student handbook for the, for the coming academic year and taking those now. So there were two motions set forth with a couple changes to the proposed language that we reviewed at the policy subcommittee meeting, which we, and committee of the whole meeting, which we reviewed in depth, and, and those changes were, were made by Attorney Gallo working with Ms. Regir and the rest of the team. And that was to the discipline code and the same with the, the dress code and the electronic device policy. So everyone received those updated drafts. And I should just say, you know, because this is a policy that has had a lot of attention and, and feedback and Attorney Gallo went through this in depth at the, at the meeting, but had, had, had a process to get a great deal of input from students, student leaders, educators, working with MASC, looking at best practices from other districts. And we also talked to another organization as well, an advocacy organization that, that put some eyes on the policy and gave us some feedback, the Latinos for Education, which was helpful. So I'm not, if the members want to look in depth at the language, we can do that. But those were the two motions. The motion was the, the discipline code with the new section eight about unwanted or inappropriate physical contact or mental health, emotional harm on a school department employee or other educational staff, and adding mental, emotional harm on a people to the previous section point six point three. And then the, the. six point three, and then the dress code and electronic device policy substantially foreign that was presented with some, some minor changes that were sent to us a couple weeks ago.
Member Sadowite?
And just to, to add what Member Nicholson said, one of the, the other, I think stakeholders that you didn't mention in the list, which was, which is great, it was parent input as well, and I think that that was important, especially with the dress code. You know, our, our goal here, reviewing the, the policy manual is to make sure that it's equitable and it's actually doing what it needs to do, and that it, it actually works. And I, I, I agree with the Member Nicholson that Attorney Gallo, you know, listened to our concerns, came back with some great ideas. It's, it's, and the process, it's not just do it this way or do it that way. They, they give you a, a, a multiple different ways that we can word certain things, and it, and it's obviously with the input from, from almost all the stakeholders, which is great. So I appreciate that. I appreciate Member Nicholson's leadership in, in this as well.
Member Gately?
I was very impressed with this policy, the discipline code, the dress code, and the electronic device policy. I think it's going to work well. I commend Deborah Gero for going out to those high schools and really getting a feeling for students and how they felt about the past policy, and I, I highly recommend this. I think you did a great job on this policy. Hopefully it doesn't change so quickly. You know how things change, right? But for now, it seems really good.
Any other discussion from the members? Members, Member Sadowite?
I'm just going to make the motion. Motion to ratify the votes taken in the policy subcommittee meeting on April seventh, twenty-twenty-one, for the discipline code, the dress code, and the electronic device policies.
Second.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is a request for executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to the Lynn Teachers Union local ten thirty-seven contract. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to the Lynn Teachers Union local ten, one zero three seven contract.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Requires roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
I'll be abstaining and not entering into executive session.
Okay. Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Member Sadowite, I'm, I'll make sure that everyone has returned to the, I think I see everyone has returned from the executive session. Member Sadowite? Go ahead.
Motion to go into regular session?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A number of seconds, roll call required.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola? Absent?
Yes. Sorry.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Member Sadowite?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the votes taken in executive session with respect to collective bargain relative to the Lynn Teachers Union local ten thirty-seven contract, which we made two votes. The first one was a non-president setting vote for the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two calendar with payment for powers on Labor Day.
So that, that would be one, each one would require a separate vote. So that's, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call's required.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Abstain.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
And the second was a non-president setting vote to approve the summer learning with incentive pay for teachers in Paris, which will take place over a four-week timeframe.
Second.
There's a second, requires a roll call as well.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Abstain.
Member Ford?
Abstain.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Thank you, Member Sadowite. Next on the agenda, Dr. Tuttwiler is under Communication and Information, North Shore Education Consortium budget, FY twenty-twenty-two.
Yep, Mayor, in your packets, you received or should have received a copy of the FY twenty-two budget for the North Shore Consortium, of which we are a member and of which I am a member of the board. This is an annual thing, just to keep you updated as to where they stand with their fiscal health.
Is there any questions? Everyone, all the members have that, have received the budget? And is this to accept the budget, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Nope, it's, it's just.
Informational?
Yep.
Are there any other, any questions related to the informational budget? I mean, excuse me, the budget on the information as presented? See any questions? Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. And then finally, on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Yes, Mayor, I do have a report that I'd like to share. You were joking a little bit earlier about how quickly the year has moved along. Last week or two weeks ago feels like months ago, but we're very quickly approaching the end of the twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, and typically, the final months or weeks of the school year feature putting the finishing or final touches on state mandated tests, and perhaps more favorably, a whole host of years and events, concerts and celebrations. Much like every other point in the, in this unique school year, the final seven weeks of the school year will look and feel different. Much of our attention as of late has been focused on expanding in-person learning, again with juniors and seniors starting today, a process that will continue through mid-May. Further, the timelines for state mandated tests have shifted to later this year, with testing windows remaining open until mid-June. Years and celebrations and events will indeed happen. We will embrace the same level of safety and precaution as we have throughout the year for these events, and very much look forward to celebrating the hard work and accomplishments of students and our deep partnership with families as we near the end of the school year. Although we are approaching the end of the school year, several initiatives are ramping up. In the most recent school committee meetings, we've presented on several significant improvements we intend to make in the realms of facilities and technology. This is, this is work that is already underway or will begin shortly and will continue throughout the summer months. We've also been working in earnest to fine tune summer learning for a summer learning experience for students. We're finalizing the program and will present it in this space more formally on May thirteenth, so Thursday after, Thursday after next. What is more, we've begun to look ahead to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and are thoughtfully piecing together a framework designed to respond to, to respond not only to the uniqueness of the current context, but also to student need around growth and development far beyond. Also, among the notable initiatives that are ramping up as we wind down the school year is the Pickering Middle School building project. There's collective excitement and relief that the Mass School Building Authority invited the city into the process for a new school. I have and continue to believe that in education, it's the people who make the experience and programs fulfilling. It is for this reason that scores of Pickering Middle School alumni reflect fondly on their experience. That said, they have excelled and succeeded despite the physical plant, not necessarily because of it. The care and expertise of the people will be the reason for the continued success, but we very much look forward to the enhancement that an updated physical plant will have on students' experience. The eligibility period for the, the eligibility period, the descriptor the MSBA calls the first phase of the project, begins today, actually, and there are eight deliverables that must happen before the end of this phase in late January. Here, I'd like only to underscore one prominent foundational feature for this and subsequent phases. There's unanimity around the idea that a new school is a wonderful development, not just for the Pickering School community, but the city as a whole. As such, I intend to make it my responsibility and my role to make the process fully transparent, accessible, and collaborative where necessary and appropriate. Schools belong to the community, and this should be a community endeavor. Finally, the English Learner Parent Advisory Council, or LPAC, has continued to meet throughout the school year on the virtual platform. Much to my delight, the membership has been steady over the course of the year. As you know, the focus of this council, council is to engage in two-way communication with families around meeting the needs of English learners. One specific request that has come out of this convening, convening, is to make the space of the school committee meeting more accessible for families whose first language is not English. For years, we've had an interpreter at in-person meetings. In the current context, there are features that we can leverage on the Zoom platform to make the meetings more accessible, and we're working with LinCam on means to make the meetings accessible on, to the television audience. There are important, these are important markers, excuse me, there are important markers featured in this step, chief among which is channeling the district core value of inclusiveness. Two more quick things. One, I had the, the pleasure of signing nineteen certificates for students who earned the seal of biliteracy. My hat is tipped to those students who were resilient, stuck with it, and came in to perform on the assessment. They were successful, and I just want to recognize those nineteen students. And also, as we're all aware, last week, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education moved to make high school in-person learning happen five days a week for students or families who would like that. That is set to begin on May seventeenth. In our meeting with principals, high school principals, we believe that we can accommodate students who wish to come in person five days a week, and so we will move to five days a week at all of our high schools, fact O'Leary is already there, beginning May seventeenth. Communication will go out to families on that tomorrow. And that is all.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Member Gately? You're, you're muted.
When is the last day for seniors? When are they going to leave the high schools? The room is running around, so I just want to clarify this. Is it May seventeenth, the seniors are done, or is it the following week?
No, Deborah Gero, if you could keep me honest on this, they have senior, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, you can do it.
Uh, well, I think there are differing dates there, so I don't want to leave.
Uh, last day of classes is May twenty-first, Friday, May twenty-first, and then that following week is senior week, and then graduation on June first and second.
Thank you.
Member Sadowite? Oh, I'm sorry. Member Gately? Any other questions, Member Gately? Sure, okay. Member Sadowite?
Dr. Tuttwiler, in the personnel portion of the agenda, there's a substantial amount of lunchades that took a leave of absence. Is there any reason behind that?
Kevin, can you speak to that?
Yes, as we, we offered them all their positions back, but those folks that enlisted wanted to remain out the remainder of this school year and not come back to work, but I think it's their intention to come back next September.
And we're, are we still doing, are we going to still do lunch like we are currently, where they're going to grab and go because it's eleven o'clock for the summer program?
You mean next school year?
If, if, the, the summer program we just discussed a minute ago.
The summer, we'll be working on the summer school program, probably, it's, it's a different, it's similar to what we're doing now. We need to just, because we're going to have all these summer school programs, so it might be a little bit different when they're there versus, so we got to come up with a whole new plan, how we're going to handle that, because I want to get the, the number of students in buildings and everything else. So we'll be ironing that out as this whole new summer school program gets rolled out. And we do normally have it at a number of schools, but where all the schools are open, pretty much every school, if we have students, they will have staff there as well. So that's additional hours for the current staff to work.
And then obviously, we know Antonio Anderson resigned, and that's, that's a sad thing. He was a great coach.
Number, uh, Member Ford?
Yeah, just a quick question. We're still vassalating on whether, uh, the state is on whether they have MCAS, correct?
I, I wish. It is, it is, uh, it is on, and there's no, there's no waiver. The only people who don't have to take it are current juniors. But, but for everybody else, the three to eight tests and the science MCAS on a high school level and the grade-ten math in the LA, it's all on.
Would it be any good for us to sign a petition to ask our delegation to do something, get involved?
I, you know what?
I think it's ludicrous to be taking it.
I don't disagree with you, Member Ford, but what I, I, I don't think it's going to do anything at this point. The commissioner, the governor, they've all been very clear that it's on, you know.
I think a resolution.
Some are actually getting started this week.
But a resolution would at least show our support. I, I don't think anybody wants it. It's just money. I mean, I think it's ridiculous what's being done to the students that are just coming back after being out a year, to come back to be facing, you know, an MCAS test. I think if we took a, a show of support, at least.
Resolution, Member Ford? Make a resolution?
That's, that's what I'd like to see us do.
Can we put that on the agenda for, for next meeting, Dr. Tuttwiler?
It's next week, so we can put it on the agenda next week.
Thank you.
Other questions from the members? That's the final piece on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a motion to adjourn, or is there a second?
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Have a great evening.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Wait till Brian finds, wait till Brian finds out we adjourned at seven forty.
Yeah, but we started at six.
Good night, everyone.
We'll talk to you all soon. Good night.
Night.